Good evening. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanez.
Here.
Mrs. Arco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Look to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is a special meeting tonight. This is our yearly strategic planning session. We're going to have a number of presentations from city administrators and directors. So without any further ado, I will hand it off to our city manager, Mark Vanderpool, who will take it from here. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. We are very pleased and excited to kick off our strategic planning session for 2019. As you know, strategic planning is very important in terms of setting forth big-picture projects while also serving as a prelude to the budget coming up. Like previous strategic planning sessions, we have a number of presentations planned for you this evening. And after we finish up with all the presentations, we'll have plenty of time for questions from the city council and others, and any items that may not be covered in the presentations. Over the last 10 years, we have been laser-focused on solidifying the city's financial position on the heels of major restructuring due to declining revenues caused by the Great Recession. More recently, after completing the city's Visioning 2030 Plan, it was determined that there must be a focus on quality-of-life services in order to realize long-term prosperity. Thankfully, the community agreed, and the Recreating Recreation Initiative was approved, resulting in a $50 million investment in upgraded parks, new amenities and structures, extended bike hike trails, restoration of the Clinton River, and so much more. This massive investment in quality-of-life assets, not to mention an impressive investment in road infrastructure and related assets, is paying dividends for the community. As we look forward to the next few years, it is important that we not lose focus on quality-of-life services and our growing infrastructure needs. At the same time, over the next few years, it'll be important to focus on the need to reinvest in the city's human assets. The Sterling Heights success story is not possible without the continued growth and performance of our employees. If we expect to continue operating as an innovative and high-performance organization, we must do more to invest in employees. While good wages and benefits are important, providing a fulfilling, rewarding, and meaningful work environment is necessary to not only retain our quality employees, but to also promote growth and entice fresh, new talent to the organization. The following video will highlight the importance of investing in human assets, followed by a presentation from Assistant City Manager Jeff Bohorski and HR and Benefits Manager Kate Baldwin.
One of the things that we're looking at is innovating our human assets. And what that means is taking a deeper dive into how are we investing into our employees. And some of the things that we've done over the past year that are notable, in my opinion, would be we launched the Paid Parental Leave Policy. So that was something that we launched back in August, and it allows for employees to have that additional bonding time with their babies. And it gives them just some extra pay, too, versus our short-term disability policy that we have. So this is in addition to that. Sterling U is something that we've developed in-house, and it allows employees an opportunity to learn about the different departments. So we've had a huge influx of new hires into the organization, and what we really wanted to do was give those new hires an opportunity to learn about the different facets of the city. And what they go through is day-long sessions, and it's hands-on as well as classroom-style learning. And it provides them an opportunity to sit over at DPW for a day. They've gotten to be at the Police Department for a day-long session, the Fire Department here at City Hall, which is also inclusive of our library and our Parks and Rec Department. And it's been very well-received. Another thing that we've launched, which is a huge success for the city, is the implementation of our On-Site Health and Wellness Center for employees and their dependents, the Care Here Center in the lower level of City Hall. And the Care Here Center is staffed with a physician and a nurse, and employees and their dependents can be seen for acute and chronic illnesses. They also do wellness programs through the center. So that's been a huge benefit to the city employees. So some of the other things that we're looking into, aside from our Care Here Center that we've implemented and the Paid Parental Leave, falls under the Sterling U umbrella. And what I mean by that is we are looking at some additional training opportunities for our employees that will enhance their skill set and enhance the organization, but we're also looking at some other creative ways that we're going to be investing in our human assets as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Kate and I are privileged to kick off the Strategic Planning 2019 with a presentation entitled "Innovating Human Assets." So with all the other waiting topics on tonight's agenda, it begs the question, what's so interesting or compelling about human resources that merits us going first? As Human Resources Director, I admit I'm biased, but I believe that the overall success of Sterling Heights over the course of its 50-year history is due in large measure to its employees. It is not an overstatement to attribute the excellent reputation that Sterling Heights enjoys to the contributions of its employees. From safe drinking water to outstanding police and fire protection, our residents rely on and benefit from having talented, dedicated, productive, and well-trained public employees. I'd like to cite three factors that I believe make the case for the critical importance of city employees and their job performance. First, many probably do not realize that 69% or $72 million of the city's annual budget is dedicated to personnel costs and benefits. I think we can all agree that that is a large amount of money. For such a substantial annual investment of taxpayer dollars, we need to assure that there is a positive return on investment in terms of employee productivity and efficiency. Although this annual investment doesn't result in a new road, a new fire engine, or new computer equipment, I'd argue that if we don't invest in employees, the delivery of public services will be affected in a very negative way. Second, high-performing employees are essential to the city's lean staffing model. From its inception, Sterling Heights government has relied on efficiency, meaning fewer employees performing public services at a highly productive level. As annually reported to the city council during the budget process, Sterling Heights has an incredibly low ratio of full-time employees to residents. For the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget, Sterling Heights had 3.6 full-time employees per 1,000 residents, placing it well ahead of comparable full-service municipalities, including Grand Rapids, Southfield, Dearborn, Warren, and Troy. This model, that has served the city so well for many years, cannot be sustained unless our employees are talented, highly trained, motivated, and exhibit a high level of job satisfaction. From a cost-benefit perspective, it is often a more efficient use of limited resources to invest in employees than to simply add employees. Third, and I believe this is the most important factor, acquiring and retaining talent has never been more critical. Whether it's in the public or private sector, talent acquisition and retention is the biggest challenge facing employers today. It's even more of a challenge for municipal corporations. With the elimination of the defined pension benefit and in a period of declining revenues, attracting and retaining young talent is increasingly more difficult. Even in the case of police and fire recruitments, the pool of candidates has shrunk to unprecedented levels. It was not that long ago when a fire recruitment would attract hundreds of qualified candidates. In our most recent fire recruitment, we had a pool of 20 qualified candidates. This is a trend that we expect to continue to see for the foreseeable future. So in the event I fail to persuade you on the critical importance of employees to the success of the city operations, let's take a humorous look at what can happen when there is a human resources failure. I promise you, it was very funny.
Is this the human resources failure?
This is the human resources failure.
So it is incumbent upon city administration to develop and implement initiatives that attract the best talent. Well, here.
One more try.
Okay, one more try. Here we go.
Excuse me. There's a sign at ramps at Park that says, "Do not drink the sprinkler water," so I made some tea with it, and now I have an infection. Sir? Sir, are you listening to me, sir? Sir, I'm talking to you! Sir! Sir, are you aware that there is waste in your water system?
So it is incumbent upon city administration to develop and implement initiatives that attract the best talent, develop it, and retain it for the long term. Kate will now focus on some unique and creative initiatives that have already been implemented and some exciting programs to come.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As noted in the video Mr. Vanderpool featured in his introduction, a creative investment the city implemented over the last year is our On-Site Employee Health and Wellness Center, Care Here. Care Here affords our employees numerous health benefits, as well as savings and convenient benefits. The center is located in the lower level of our City Hall offices, and as you can see, it is a licensed medical facility. We have a total of, well, there's a waiting room as well. It's like a normal doctor's office. We do have a total of four exam rooms, and here pictured are two of them. And we also have an on-site lab and medication dispensary. Our center is staffed with a physician and a nurse. Pictured to the left is Nurse Kataro Rayner, and pictured to the right is Dr. Latha Patel. Employees and local retirees, along with their spouses and dependents on our health insurance plan, can be seen by the physician and nurse for acute illnesses such as sore throat or ear infection, or they can be seen for chronic care management such as diabetes or high cholesterol. All of these services are provided at a very low cost, if not free, to those employees and their families. A primary focus and goal of human resources is the overall health and wellness of our employees and their families. And that being said, there's also a number of wellness programs that employees can partake in, which include one-on-one sessions with health coaches on things like smoking cessation, weight loss, diabetes education, and much more. So as we launched our very own center, we wanted to find a creative and innovative way to introduce it to our employees. We offered our active employees and their spouses an opportunity to earn an incentive to complete a health risk assessment, or an HRA. Employees can earn $125, while spouses can earn $75. And the HRA consists of two components. The first component is a 28-panel blood draw, and the second component is a follow-up appointment with the physician to go over those results and just go over the baseline health of the employee or spouse. To date, we've had 102 people complete their HRA, which is fantastic. And as we move into a new fiscal year, we are actively looking at how we can help our employees achieve their optimal health through the center. I am happy to report, the latest utilization report received from Care Here indicates that we are currently at a 50% utilization. That's a year-to-date number. This well exceeds what we had initially anticipated. Some weeks are a little bit busier than others. We have had a high week of 86% utilization. The Care Here Center has proven to be of great value in our efforts, excuse me, for talent acquisition and also retaining our employees. And over time, the city will see their health insurance claims decrease with more and more employees utilizing the center versus going through the normal retail physician's office. So now I'm going to pass it back to Jeff, who's going to discuss another exciting benefit that we launched this past year.
Thank you, Kate. There's an undeniable trend of employers providing some form of paid parental leave benefits to their employees. In the public sector, this trend is exemplified both in large municipalities such as Atlanta, New York, Minneapolis, Seattle, Boston, and Pittsburgh, and small ones, including locally the city of Ferndale. There are numerous studies that have linked paid parental leave benefits with more positive outcomes for both the parents and the newborn. These studies cite the following factors as establishing the need for some form of paid parental leave benefits. Factor number one, more men and women are struggling to balance work and family responsibilities. Obviously, nothing earth-shattering here, but two-income households are now the norm, which means there is an immediate strain on personal finances when there is a newborn. For most young families, it becomes a huge financial and stressful decision for mom or dad to stay home to care for a newborn. Factor number two, better outcomes for newborns in terms of physical and cognitive health. Again, it should be obvious that having a parent available to nurture a newborn is going to result in a healthier baby. In fact, studies have associated the availability of paid parental leave benefits with reductions in low birth weight babies, lower infant mortality, higher cognitive development, and overall better health. Factor number three, a bridge to daycare. Most childcare providers do not accept infants until six weeks of age. Paid parental leave benefits ensure that there is a continuity of infant care in the critical first year of development. Factor number four, financial stability. Paid parental leave benefit means parents no longer have to be faced with choosing between bonding time with a newborn and a paycheck. In Sterling Heights, most of our general employees hired after 2012 relied on PTO, or paid time off, for compensated leave. For our new hires, the allotment of PTO is not adequate to provide a meaningful period of bonding time for the new parent. Although a short-term disability benefit is available for the birthing mother, this benefit provides only 60% of the employee's base pay. Clearly, if Sterling Heights was going to attract and retain young, talented employees, it simply made sense to consider the development of a paid parental leave benefit. And with city council backing, the city implemented an administrative policy and procedure order on August 1, 2018, instituting a paid parental leave benefit for the very first time. So here's how the policy works. There are two mutually exclusive parental leave benefits available to eligible employees. First is the paid maternity leave for the birthing mother. A birthing mother is entitled to five consecutive weeks of paid maternity leave, starting from the date of birth. After the five weeks of paid maternity leave, the birthing mother transitions to short-term disability. The second benefit is paid parental bonding leave for the non-birthing or adopting parent. A non-birthing parent or adopting parent is entitled to one week of paid bonding leave, starting from the date of birth. Since the inception of the city's paid parental leave policy in August, one employee has received paid maternity leave, and five employees have received paid bonding leave. The most unexpected outcome is the extremely positive responses coming from our new fathers, who have been the most vocal in supporting the paid bonding time now afforded under the policy. Overall, the policy has been a success, and we are confident that over time it will greatly enhance HR's recruitment and retention efforts, particularly in the increasingly competitive market the city is now facing. So having reviewed the programs already implemented, Kate will now present our exciting new training initiative that promises to revitalize and improve employee performance.
Thanks, Jeff. As Jeff indicated, we have some new and exciting training initiatives that we feel will bring value to our workforce. I think it's important we share with you how far we've come over the past year as it relates to training and the foundation that has been created. As again featured in Mr. Vanderpool's introduction, over the past year or so, an idea was presented to start a program that would allow all employees of the city an opportunity to gain knowledge, interact with colleagues in different departments, and build an understanding about all of the different departments that we have here at the city. We coined this program as our very own Sterling University, or Sterling U, as we like to call it. During Sterling U, employees participate in both classroom style and hands-on learning. Employees visit our Department of Public Works, Police, Fire, City Hall, which is inclusive of our Parks and Rec Department, as well as the library. The program runs biannually, both in the spring and in the fall, and we have approximately 60 or so employees going through each session. And to date, we've had approximately 110 employees complete the program. This is pictured here, just some of the Sterling U graduates from each of the session. It's not encompassing all of the graduates. But we will be inviting city council members to our next session in the spring. More to come on that. And once all employees have participated through the program, we do plan on having it annually for new hires, and we are looking to develop a shortened evening program for interested residents in the near future. Now that you have a little bit of history on how our Sterling U program developed, this program has allowed us to take a deeper dive, excuse me, analyzing our workforce and having conversations with employees and department leaders. And one thing is apparent, we have realized that our employees merit more than what we've recently provided to them in regard to training opportunities. And as we all know and can all agree, training is so important for employees and is key in any organization. With all this in mind, the intent behind Sterling U is to enhance the training and resources and provide a foundation. Thus, Sterling U will now become the umbrella of a much larger program and will be the start to a much larger and more progressive platform for our employees. By implementing a larger-based training program to our employees and providing them with additional resources, this will allow them to progress, their skill set as professionals, add value to their roles, and most importantly, we will see an increase in job satisfaction, efficiencies in processes, and innovation. So to put into perspective the importance of a robust training program and how it impacts employees, as well as an organization, and what it truly will mean to us, we wanted to take a minute to hear from learning expert Eduardo Brucino, who discusses how a growth mindset through training can help cultivate a learning-oriented culture. So let's take a look. Hopefully, this one will work better than the last.
Most of us go through life trying to do our best at whatever we do, whether it's our job, family, school, or anything else. I feel that way. I try my best. But some time ago, I came to the realization that I wasn't getting much better at the things I cared most about, whether it was being a husband, or a friend, or a professional, or teammate. And I wasn't improving much at those things, even though I was spending a lot of time working hard at them. I've since realized, from conversations I've had and from research, that this stagnation, despite hard work, turns out to be pretty common. So I'd like to share with you some insights into why that is and what we can all do about it. What I've learned is that the most effective people and teams in any domain do something we can all emulate. They go through life deliberately alternating between two zones, the learning zone and the performance zone. The learning zone is when our goal is to improve. Then, we do activities designed for improvement, concentrating on what we haven't mastered yet, which means we have to expect to make mistakes, knowing that we will learn from them. That is very different from what we do when we're in our performance zone, which is when our goal is to do something as best as we can, to execute. Then, we concentrate on what we have already mastered, and we try to minimize mistakes. Both of these zones should be part of our lives, but being clear about when we want to be in each of them, with what goal, focus, and expectations, helps us better perform and better improve. The performance zone maximizes our immediate performance, while the learning zone maximizes our growth and our future performance. The reason many of us don't improve much despite our hard work is that we tend to spend almost all of our time in the performance zone.
So to recap, Eduardo discusses the reasons why many of us don't improve in our work performance despite all of our hard work. Many of us are stuck in the performance zone, and we've either mastered our tasks and are no longer challenged, or we are doing the best we can rather than trying to improve. And as you can see in the chart on the screen, a benefit within the learning zone is growth and performance, future performance. This is key and imperative for our employees, and it's also vital to our organization. Now, all this being said, we all know that we have fantastic employees who are very high performers, and thus, our overall goal is to foster a learning environment through training, to provide our employees with a learning-oriented culture, to support their growth, and to support their future performance. And by allowing employees learning opportunity through training and opportunity to grow as professionals, we all succeed. So now that we have some insight on the importance of training and why that learning zone is so important and key for employees and organizations, let's dive into some of the new and exciting opportunities, new training opportunities that the city is currently vetting. City administration has recently come together to learn more about a program called Lean Six Sigma and how we, as a municipality, can implement lean methodologies into our organization. We met with members of Macomb Community College, as well as an expert in lean principles, to discuss a program our employees can embark on, where they could walk away from the program certified in lean by Macomb Community College. If you aren't already familiar, Lean provides principles, practices, and is aimed at maximizing customer value while improving processes. Research has showed by Research has showed the methodologies have successfully been implemented in both local and state government. By way of example, the city of Grand Rapids implemented lean principles and reduced the amount of wait time for a water tap permit from 16 days to one day. This one improvement alone has had a ripple effect on contractors, home construction, as well as their customers. Through lean principles, it helps individuals think outside of the box in different situations. Another quick example is the city of East Lansing, who is also using lean principles to implement improvements to their permit process. While the program is still being framed worked, it's designed to allow our employees to be able to work with a lean expert in lean principles, gain the knowledge, the resources and tools, and receive a certificate of completion through MCC, or Macomb Community College. In this same process, employees will also have an opportunity to be formally accredited with a lean certification through a professional accreditation body. Another program we have really analyzed and are still considering is called the Disney Way. It's no secret that Disney has had a very successful business model and an exceedingly involved and very progressive training program for their employees. The Disney Way is a multi-day training program our employees would participate in, on learning to create a customer-centric culture that includes clearly defined values such as mutual respect and trust, and leads them to help make customers' dreams come true. The Disney Way customer-centric training is based upon Walt Disney's original success principles: Dare, Dream, Believe, Do, a credo that is a foundation of commitment to creating customer service experiences that are second to none. To share an example with you, Ottawa County here in Michigan recognized the need for a cultural change, and leaders in the organization all agreed that customer service was a core Ottawa then went through Disney Way training, and over 1,000 employees participated over a three-year period. As a result of the training in Ottawa County, they had such a remarkable success that they then developed an internal training program based on the Disney Way model. I'll jump ahead a little bit. They created a new vision statement, developed their very own story, and lastly, new customer codes of conduct. Ottawa County is even highlighted in the most recent edition of the Disney Way book. There is still more to come as we continue to vet and analyze this program. Also, under the Sterling U. umbrella, we will develop a framework of multiple learning paths that an employee can take. Included in this will be a one-day sabbatical, in which the employee can take the day to complete a training of their choice with their manager's approval. Employees will also have training options through a learning management system, which is an à la carte-style format. Learning management systems house numerous trainings via e-learning online in various categories such as business, safety, compliance, computer software, and much more. Leadership training will also be available for supervisors, managers, and directors within the city. And also provided will be specialized departmental training, for example, effective communication strategies, or a form of technical skills development training. So as we look back on some of the things that we've implemented over the past year, we really all should feel proud on the strides that we've made. From the parental leave benefits to the Care Here Center, the beginning of the Sterling U. program, all of these initiatives are needed in our organization, and we've had the support from the mayor, as well as city council, and city administration, and our employees. And that support exemplifies how much we value our employees. Now, we still have a ways to go as we continue to navigate the implementation of our new training initiatives. We believe that through training and fostering that learning-oriented culture, we will add value to our employees and have a stronger organization. Thank you.
We're so lucky to have outstanding employees, and I'm really looking forward to talking much more about these new training and development opportunities in the forthcoming budget, in which you'll see actual budget allocations requested to get these programs implemented in the next year. And Mayor, moving on, as I mentioned earlier, recreating recreation consists of many elements, not the least of which includes the city's first-ever non-motorized plan, which includes more options for walkers, bikers, canoeers, kayakers, and others who like to enjoy the great outdoors. We know from studies that living near and having easy access to these amenities results in the following: reduced crime, increased home values, increased quality of life, increased enjoyment by residents of all ages. While the title of "Non-Motorized Plan" may not sound very exciting, the actual output is super exciting. The following video will focus on the Clinton River, followed by City Development Director Jason Castor, who will present an update on our entire plan.
The benefits to the improvements on the Clinton River are numerous. So over the past couple of years, we've seen tremendous improvement in the Clinton River and what that means to the city of Sterling Heights, especially in regards to parks and recreation activities. Just the opening of the river and the reworking of the river has made it significantly better in terms of how the water flows, which is great. We aren't seeing backups of water into the park as much as we've seen in the past, which is a great thing for the Parks and Recreation Department and the park system as a whole. We've also seen some tremendous opportunities for use of the river: people fishing, people walking along the river. Certainly, if it's not flooded, that gives people the opportunity to walk more times of the year. We've also seen people take advantage of the river with what it's truly intended for, which is canoeing and kayaking. And each day, no matter the time of year, it seems, there's people going down that river, which is fantastic to see. What was really an eyesore and really something that we didn't want to talk about in the past has now turned into a city gem for us. So we look forward to what is to come with the river. We've installed some new amenities, some new docks, and what's great about that is it's an accessible feature, something that we want to continue to improve on, making recreation accessible for all skills, all abilities. And it really opens up the doors to some tremendous programming opportunities down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council. My presentation tonight will focus on our non-motorized transportation options. Non-motorized transportation, commonly referred to as bicycle and pedestrian travel, is important to the city of Sterling Heights and such abundant pathways for biking and walking, was set as a guiding principle included in our 2030 visioning plan. Non-motorized transportation is also important to the region and state because it contributes to increased mobility, safety, transportation choices, recreation, placemaking, economic development, and the health of our residents. Sterling Heights is unique in the non-motorized opportunities available. As recently, a nine-mile stretch of the Clinton River was opened. It was opened up for paddling and added to the Clinton River Water Trail. This was made possible with funding from the Environmental Protection Agency, or the Having the Clinton River navigable, unobstructed for the first time since the '70s is a direct result of the 100% EPA-funded, $4.5 million grant. The funds provided for many improvements along the river to improve water quality and connectivity of the river. Improvements included restoration of eroding riverbanks utilizing various methods. The picture shown here utilizes three separate measures: root rods, which are the lower trunks and root fin of a tree, that are placed along the riverbank with the root fin in the water. The root rods slow erosion velocity adjacent to the riverbank, in addition to providing habitat for insects. To further protect riverbanks, vegetative reinforced soil slopes were used to reduce side slope angle and restored with dense vegetation to protect the slope. Stone protection was also used in various locations along the river to provide protection from the normal river flows, stabilizing the ground above it, allowing vegetation to Shown here is another restorative practice used to prevent bank erosion and introduce new aquatic habitat. This is with the use of a log vein. Shown here, a large trunk, a large tree trunk, is placed at an established angle facing upstream, with one end embedded into the bank of the river and the other buried in the stream bed. This structure collects heavier sediment while directing water away from the bank as it flows over the log vein. As the water flows over the log, it creates a deeper pool of water, creating an underwater habitat. Different methods used for bank restoration throughout this project contributed to reducing an estimated 230 tons of sediment loading annually through this section of the river. Important for the health of the Clinton River was restoring connectivity. Completing this task eliminated a total of 28 woody debris blockages. Most of them were small, however, the one shown here was very large, at 300 feet long. The removal of these blockages are necessary, as blockages can disrupt flow patterns leading to increased erosion and blocking navigation for fish and paddlers. Here's shown a stream view of the picture of that same location with the large woody debris blockage. The monitoring of the river and removal of these blockages is constant to keep this unique natural resource from falling back into an unnavigable condition. Some of the benefits resulting from the Clinton River project is providing residents another recreational opportunity in terms of fishing and paddling, in addition to providing the opportunity for at least one business to relocate to Sterling Heights capitalizing on this resource. This section of the river through Sterling Heights is now included as a navigable part of the Clinton River Water Trail. Shown on this map created by the Clinton River Watershed Council and Macomb County notes the distance you are from Lake St. Clair, in addition to showing river access points. With all the improvements to the Clinton River, a local business, Clinton River Canoe and Kayak, relocated its business to this property along the river adjacent to Rotary Park and providing them direct access to the river. This business has invested a significant amount of money into purchasing and cleaning up this property, removing almost two tons of scrap metal around the property. The section of the river through Sterling Heights is ever-changing with improvements. We have added a water trail stop at Dodge Park, providing a place to take a break on your paddle trip down the river. 24 river markers have been added along the water trail, which can be referenced if needed in the case of an emergency. In just this last November, as Kyle Langlois mentioned, the first of our two EZ Dock launches were installed. Shown here is at Clinton River North Park, and the second location will be located near Rotary Park and Clinton River Canoe and Kayak. Moving on to our bike and hike trails, Sterling Heights has over 17 miles of shared-use trails, which are off-road trails used by both pedestrians and cyclists. These trails can be found along some major roadways and in many of the 30 neighborhood and major city parks. The Clinton River Trail System is the longest continuous trail through the city, providing a five-mile path adjacent to the Clinton River extending from Edison Court to Van Dyke. When connecting the adjacent parks, the added path total climbs to over eight miles. Shown here, starting at the trailhead at Edison Court, the path meanders along a tree-covered path, passing along the newly-installed Dodge Park Bridge connecting to our beautifully renovated Dodge Park. And along this path, you will come across public art, as shown here. This floral piece was added this past summer. North of the Riverland Road, you will travel over boardwalks elevated to maintain connectivity with Oxbow Pools and the Clinton River. And finally, you will reach Van Dyke Avenue, where you can continue into the city of Utica under the overpass. A new project upcoming in 2019 will be a trail connection, shown here in red, from Van Dyke to the pass system, providing a connection from the North Van Dyke District to the trail system. And if you are interested in more of an adventure adjacent to the Clinton River Trail System, you can take a detour, enjoy the mountain bike path. This is a 2.65-mile, two-way, single-track dirt path, which is maintained by the Clinton River Area Mountain Bike Association. Shown here, it runs from Edison Court to the Van Dyke Overpass, where you will connect into the asphalt path. The Clinton River Trail System connects to another established trail, the Freedom Trail, which is maintained by Macomb County. The Freedom Trail parallels Metropolitan Parkway, as the trail runs between Harrison Township's Lake St. Clair Metro Park and Shana Road. The 11-mile Freedom Trail connects to existing Sterling Heights paths along Shana and Utica, where the trail links to the Clinton River Park Trail. Continuing north along this route will link you to Riverbends Park and Shelby Township, and combined, these trails provide to over 26 and 1/2 miles of continuous path to enjoy. Michigan's Iron Belt Trail is the latest addition to Michigan's 1,000 miles of recreational trails. Two trail routes make up Michigan's Iron Belt Trail. One is for hikers and one is for bikers. The biking trail will be 774 miles, of which 64% makes up the use of existing trails. This will travel through Sterling Heights. Planned and optional routes are shown here on the map in red. The trail will enter the city at Shana and 14, continuing north until you reach 16 Mile Road. From here, you can continue along the existing trail that's established along Shana and The option being considered is extending a path west along Metropolitan Parkway to the newly-constructed 10-foot-wide Dodge Park road path. The total Iron Belt path through Sterling Heights will be around eight miles. With the recreating recreation initiative, the construction of a nature trail connecting Beaumont and Delhi Park will be included in this year's projects. Starting around the newly paved parking lots in Delhi Park, this trail will add approximately 1.7 miles of path, as you head north along the Plumberg Drain, winding through open spaces adjacent to retention ponds, until you reach the Beaumont Hospital parking lot. At this point, we will be working with Beaumont to connect to their existing campus sidewalk, providing a connection to the sidewalk along Dequender, and also access to the hospital atrium entrance, where you will find a nice cafe, providing a place to rest and refuel before returning your trip home. Continuing on to sidewalks gaps in the city, sidewalks along major roads are continually being completed with new developments, city projects, state, and county road projects. The complete streets policy adopted by Sterling Heights in 2012 and Macomb County in 2014 has been used as a best practice as a planning tool for road construction projects to ensure that roadways are designed to enable safe access along and across streets. In recent years, developments and road projects have combined to fill in some of these major Shown here, highlighted in red, are the approximately 4.75 miles of sidewalk gaps that were completed from 2012 to 2015. Couple of projects completed during this time are the development of the Jimmy John's in 2012 on the corner of Mound and 19 Mile Road. This gap completed an undeveloped corner, and the last gap along Mound Road and Section 4, in addition to completing the last gap along the north side of 19 Mile Road in between Van Dyke and Ryan. In 2015, the Van Dyke Road reconstruction project provided for the completion of Van Dyke Avenue Road sidewalk gaps in between 14 and 18 Mile Road on both sides. The blue lines shown here highlight the approximately four miles of sidewalk gaps that were completed from 2016 to 2018. Some of the notable gap projects that were completed during this timeframe are along Dequender Road, north of 18 Mile Road to Doverie. This section of walk was completed with an Oakland County road project. And another notable sidewalk location was with the Hall Road M59 project, where four mid-block crossings were added to the existing Hayes and Shana Road crossings, providing an additional signalized crossing connectivity to businesses on both sides of the road. And finally, just recently, with the Canal Road reconstruction project, the gap under M53 was completed, providing access to Delco Road and to all the businesses along Delco and Hall Road. Shown here in yellow are the upcoming... Shown here in yellow are the upcoming approximately 1.5 miles of miscellaneous gap completions planned for 2019, 2020. The locations here will be completed through city sidewalk gap program and scheduled developments that have received site plan approval. Two notable locations for upcoming sidewalk gap projects are Clinton River Road and Saw Road and Nineteen Mile and Shana Road. Saw Road and Clinton River Road sidewalk gap will be completed with a water and sewer improvement job after the underground utilities are installed in the area will be restored with sidewalk. Another gap that we will work to eliminate is the gap at Shana Road and Nineteen Mile Road, which a worn path is visible when visiting the site. We have received requests to complete this gap from residents. Trails and sidewalks combine to provide good non-motorized alternatives with an abundance of pathways and biking for walking. On the map here, shown in orange and purple show the lines where sidewalks and paths are currently installed. However, shown in red, there are still major road sidewalk gaps to be completed. One major project on the horizon that will eliminate many sidewalk gaps is the Innovate Mound Project, which when completed, will eliminate approximately six miles of gaps along Mound Road. And in conclusion, the sidewalk path and installation are constantly being added to our non-motorized network, to which now includes the Clinton River. I would also like to note that the success of these amenities is tied to the plan review, design, maintenance through the Departments of Engineering, Parks and Rec, and DPW. Providing and maintaining mobility options adds to the many outstanding recreational opportunities currently available, making Sterling Heights a great place to stay and play 365. Thank you.
And as Mr. Castor mentioned, we'll be hearing much more about closing many of the sidewalk gaps in the forthcoming budget. And as the Innovate Mound Project does enter the design phase, the plan is to close all those gaps as well. And Mayor, moving on, in 2013, the City's Safe Streets Initiative was approved by voters. This initiative provided 3.3 million annually, or 20 million over six years, to improve neighborhood streets. It also provided 7 million annually, or 42 million over the six years, to preserve staffing levels in the police and fire departments. The average cost to residents for the Safe Streets Initiative equated to $157 annually, or $13 monthly, based on the average-priced home. With the need to renew this millage in November, it's important for residents to see how their tax dollars have been put to good use. I'd like to now introduce our city engineer Brent Bayshaw, who will provide an update on the local road improvements funded by the Safe Streets Initiative.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mayor Taylor, members of council, and good evening. Tonight, I'd like to provide an overview of the local road network and detail how the 2013, excuse me, voter-approved Safe Streets Initiative has impacted the system. I'd also like to take a look ahead with what's on the horizon for the local road network. The Safe Streets proposal was put forth before voters in 2013 due to the vastness of the local road network and the lack of funding provided by the state to maintain these neighborhood roads adequately. The six-year millage was approved by voters and 2019 marks the final year of improvements to be completed under this millage. In 2007, the city began annually rating all 290 miles of its local road system using the Pazer System. The Pazer System is a uniform statewide system used for rating roads 1 to 10 based on condition. These ratings provide an asset inventory of the local road system and enables pavement management of the network. The pie chart shown indicates the existing conditions in 2012 and the foreseen pavement conditions in 2018, if no additional funding was supplemented into the local road network. In 2012, the number of roads rated in poor condition totaled 11% and outweighed the number of roads in good condition, which totaled 7%. If no supplemental local road funding was applied to the system by 2018, the number of roads in poor condition was projected to total 31%, while the number of roads in good condition reduced to 5%. The projections of these conditions, which takes into account the age and natural deterioration of the roadways, was the reason the local roads were included in the Safe Streets Initiative presented to voters. With the Safe Streets approved funding, which totals 3.3 million annually, a heavy dose of construction began in 2014 with various types of repairs. By the end of 2019, 98 roads will have received full-width concrete reconstruction totaling 18 miles of roadway. 137 roads will have received sectional concrete replacement totaling 9.7 miles of roadway. And asphalt resurfacing will have been completed on 11 roads totaling 4.3 miles of roadway. In total, 246 roads will have received capital improvement totaling 32 miles. The road improvements were completed throughout the city limits. Blue areas indicate an improved area or street, while red indicates planned improvements for 2019. At this time, I'd like to take a look around the city to highlight the type of improvements that have been completed. Many improvements have been completed in the northwest part of the city, similar to the improvements completed on Balsam Way. This road was improved as one of the 98 roads receiving full replacement. And moving south, we find many local roads in this area that were originally constructed in the 1970s and many poorly-rated roads that have been improved under Safe Streets. Cheryl Court was reconstructed in 2016 to provide an aesthetically pleasing, maintenance-free improvement for years to come. Another improvement to this area occurred on Calca Drive. Calca Drive was improved in 2014 as one of the 11 roads receiving an asphalt overlay. The overlay improved surface conditions for the entire length of the road. Moving south to the southwest portion of the city, I'd like to highlight one of the many improvements to this area. The Koch Drive Neighborhood Entrance to Fifteen Mile Road. Koch Drive was improved as one of the 137 sectional concrete replacements, and drivers can now concentrate on the safe entrance to or exit from Fifteen Mile Road without worrying about avoiding potholes at the same time. Moving east, we highlight the southeast section of the city. Again, the blue areas highlight the completed improvements in Safe Streets, and the red areas are the proposed and upcoming 2019 improvements. The neighborhood south of Metro Parkway and east of Dodge Park has seen numerous improvements, such as a full road replacement on Grinley Drive. Grinley Drive is a street that DPW provided hot-mix joint repairs on as a temporary repair, and in 2017, a full-width pavement repair was made. Moving north and into the center of the east half of the city, I'd like to highlight Dill Drive. Dill Drive contains a main entrance and exit point to Messmore Elementary School, which is shown on the right side of the picture. In 2016, Dill Drive received one of the 137 sectional concrete improvements made during the Safe Streets era. Continuing north to the northeast section of the city, I'd like to highlight another sectional concrete improvement made to Island Drive in 2007. Similar to, or 2017, I'm sorry, similar to Koch Drive, this was an aesthetic improvement, which will be maintenance-free for some time, but also makes the entrance and exit from Hayes Road a lot safer, as drivers can concentrate on their turning movements and not dodging So what effect did these improvements have on our local road system as a whole? The graph shown chart the trend of pavement conditions since 2013. The graph on the left side of the screen charts the amount of roads rated in good condition at the start of Safe Streets. The amount of good roads totaled 7% in 2013. Safe Streets expenditure over the last five years and incorporating the upcoming 2019 projects resulted in an increase of pavement rated in good condition to 16%. Additionally, over the last five years and projecting in 2019, the number of roads rated in poor condition has been reduced from 11% in 2013 to 9% in 2019. In 2019, Sterling Heights residents will once again vote on the renewal of the Safe Streets millage. What can a voter expect of Safe Streets once again passes? A total of 110 full road replacements totaling roughly 22 miles can be expected. Sectional repairs at another 150 locations totaling 10 miles can be expected, resulting in capital improvements at approximately 260 locations totaling 32 miles. What type of improvement could be made with the Safe Streets renewal? For a few examples, I'd like to refer to our current road rating map. The map shows roads rated 1 to 2 in red. These are the worst roads in the worst condition. 3 to 4 ratings are in blue, 5 to 6 ratings are in green, 7 and 8 ratings are in yellow, and 9 to 10 ratings are in gray. And gray is considered the best rated roads in the network, and it contains all the work that we've done over the past five years as well. And as a side note, this map is available for detailed viewing on the city website if you'd like to look further into it. So looking at the neighborhood north of Metro Parkway and west of Dodge Park, Francis Drive is a road that could be improved to continue with the work done on neighboring streets such as Annalisa and Mario Drive to the south. In the neighborhood south of Metro Parkway, west of Dodge Park Road, improvements could be continued on streets such as Village Drive to continue the improvements completed on neighboring Wayne Drive and Thomas Drive. In the neighborhood north of Fifteen Mile Road and east of Ryan Road, road improvements could be continued on streets such as Cavant Drive to match the improvements recently completed on Vito Drive. And moving north, in the neighborhood of Nineteen Mile Road and Dequinder, improvements to streets such as Lake Forest Drive or Hop Tree Drive could be made to match the recent improvements to Hornbean Drive. So without a Safe Streets renewal by voters, what can be expected? Improvements would go back to a similar output as was seen pre-2013. The focus would go to more smaller sectional repairs to address the very worst of the worst pavement, and full road reconstructions would be minimal, and approximately 10 over the six-year period could be expected. Approximately 60 total work locations could be expected over a six-year period, addressing a little over five miles. In summary, a renewal of the Safe Streets Initiative would generate approximately $20.5 million of funds to be expended on capital improvements to our neighborhood roads. This amount would fund approximately 80% of our local road capital expenditure. It would enable another 32 miles of local road improvement and continue the trend established in 2013 of improving the condition of the city's local road network. This concludes my presentation, and thank you for your time.
You can see we are making steady progress on neighborhood roads with Safe Streets. While there's been a lot of talk about increased road funding from Governor Whitmer, the reality is any new funding from the state would need to be allocated to major roads and not local roads. Any increase in major road funding may take years to realize, as we've seen in the legislature. Nevertheless, Safe Streets funding will ensure we reach our goal with neighborhood roads. In addition to roads, Safe Streets also funds approximately 50 full-time positions in the police department, police officer positions, that is, and another 20 full-time positions in the fire department. The police and fire chiefs will now talk about how Safe Streets funding has been used to preserve these staffing levels while implementing a number of new programs, all of which is necessary to keep Sterling Heights among the safest community in the nation.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mayor Taylor, members of council, good evening. I'm proud to quickly recap what Safe Streets has provided the Sterling Heights Police Department and go over the intention of Safe Streets and what it did provide. Again, Safe Streets, the primary goal was to maintain current levels of staffing in our public safety departments and at the police department, and I would absolutely say that goal has been accomplished, and we have exceeded expectations during this last run through Safe Streets. During the time of Safe Streets and leading up to it, we've seen the largest turnover of officers and command officers in the department's history. Over the last four years, we've hired 56 officers. Ten officers failed to complete the department's rigorous FTO program, so well-trained, a lot of new officers. Many of these officers came with extensive experience from other agencies, which I'm proud to say bodes well for this city. They came here from other jurisdictions because of pay, benefits, and reputation, and we have some outstanding police officers that made the jump to Sterling Heights, very lucky. And we have a very diverse candidate pool that's been applying to Sterling Heights and more so lately because of our outreach programs and recruiting efforts. Programs that we are proud to say we've accomplished during the Safe Streets time and a lot of these just in the last couple of years. The biggest one, the Smart Moves Program, which is our school program, which is now taught in all nineteen elementary schools throughout Sterling Heights. 1,500 kids will get this program every single year. An officer spends 10 weeks in the classroom, 10 one-hour visits in each of the classrooms throughout Warren Con and Utica Community Schools, finishing, culminating with a graduation ceremony. The program has been extremely well-received with our parents, residents, school staff, everybody involved, and it's great that we're back in the classroom with these kids, teaching them the dangers of drugs, alcohol, smoking, vaping, and social media issues. Another big program that we brought back after almost a decade of being gone is our Citizens Police Academy. I'm proud to say we've just graduated four sessions of the Citizens Police Academy, normally totaling about 20 participants in every single class. Residents come through for a 10-week window, and they learn everything there is to know about the police department, again, culminating with a graduation. Very well-received program, and we love telling our residents what we do on a daily basis. As far as technology goes, we just launched our drone program last month, thanks to Captain Hopper, Officer Pakla, Sergeant Kerian. We are now fully operational. We have seven people certified through the FAA as drone operators, and we've utilized the drone already in fatal car crash of a missing 12-year-old that we thought could be in danger of drowning up by Lakeside Mall. And we had a very large apartment fire on Christmas Day, and there's Officer Shippey there with the drone, and he's working directly with the firefighters, and they used that drone the entire fire to figure out where suppression efforts should be focused. So it was very well-received by the fire department and an awesome tool to have at that fire. Our Citizen Patrol continues to provide services to the city every single day. A large staff of volunteers give a lot of their time, and you can see the primary part of their time, the big part of the blue pie circles are patrol hours. They drive around in Sterling Heights in a marked car that says Citizens Patrol. They're the eyes and ears for us, call in suspicious incidents and activities. And I'm proud to say, just last year alone, in 2018, they volunteered 3,260 hours totaling $77,935 worth of volunteer hours back to the city. So great program. And then recently, we just announced this, a couple of weeks ago, we have an officer, Detective Lindsey Pappas, who's going to be assigned part-time to the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, working with Michigan State Police through a Department of Justice grant. ICAC stretches across the United States. There's 61 agencies involved, 4,500 officers, and the sole focus of this task force and Detective Pappas is tracking down child sexual predators that use the internet, and we're very excited about being part of this task force and the resources we're going to be able to get because of this partnership. Also, our K9s, we had one K9 unit, and now we are back up to three K9s. Two of those officers are brand-new to the program with two brand-new dogs, so very proud to have coverage pretty much 24/7 now throughout the city with our dogs. Our core program is doing outstanding. Again, neighborhood police officer for all the different districts of the city, including a traffic corps officer, and we continue on a monthly basis to do core activities, and these officers are very involved in the subdivisions that they patrol. Our CERT program, Community Emergency Response Team, very active. We had a large-scale exercise last year. These people, again, donating a lot of hours just in case there was ever a mass casualty event, a tornado, some kind of event that we could not handle with just police and fire resources alone. These folks step up, they're specially trained. These folks step up, they're specially trained, and they help out quite a bit. And another big initiative that we just started again last year, and a special thanks to Lieutenant Mario Bassinelli who got this off the ground, is our Sterling Heights Drug-Free Coalition. And with the support of many council members as well, we are now up and running as a drug-free coalition here in Sterling Heights. We've been running a lot of different programs like our Narcan 101 Night, Narcan Training, we provided Narcan at this event. This Addiction Recovery Event, very well-attended with a ton of addiction and recovery groups that were there that night. And this event just held a couple of months ago at Stevenson High School where students were writing on the wall what they want their future selves to be. Again, this Drug-Free Coalition has already held 15 events in less than a year and will be applying for a very large million-dollar grant in the near term here. Our staffing history in Sterling Heights, again, before the recession, 2002, 172 sworn officers, and obviously after the recession, a lot of cutbacks and a drop to 148 sworn officers. And a lot of that was due to not only the recession and budget cutbacks, but the jail was privatized and we now use G-Force Security to run our jail. That eliminated the need for 10 officers in the jail. Dispatch Services moved to Macomb County, that removed one sergeant position, and the Community Services Bureau, the old DARE program and our community officers, those spots were all removed as well, and that was three officers. And you can see that in 2018, we actually gained two officers. I'm very proud about this, and that is our School Resource Officer Program. And now all three high schools in Sterling Heights have a full-time, dedicated, uniformed, armed police officer assigned to the school. Every single one of our high schools is now protected, and we did this in cooperation with the school districts. They pay half the salary and benefits and we pay the other half. So we got a two-for-one and now all three of our high schools are covered. And then just recently, we just gained another police officer, and that's because of the formation of Phantom, the Federal Anti-Narcotics Team in Macomb, a brand-new drug unit that Chief Dwyer and Warren and myself worked with the DEA since this last summer to get off the ground. We have five participating agencies. Each of us are going to donate an officer. The DEA is going to give us three officers, and we're going to be targeting large-scale drug operations in Macomb County, and this will be starting sometime in February. We had a large press kickoff conference in Warren just a couple of weeks ago. We're ready to go, and again, by donating one officer, we get the full resources of 200 DEA agents in Detroit. And all of this maintaining our sixth safest city reputation and ranking throughout the United States as far as large cities go. So this gets asked all the time, what is the right number of police officers? How many police officers should you have? And one of the first things that's always cited is the number of officers per thousand residents. You'll see this cited all the time. And a quick breakdown of where we stand, Sterling Heights has 1.1 officers per thousand residents, Warren has 1.45, Troy has 1.2, Shelby has .9, Dearborn 2.0, and Detroit 3.5. And at first glance, you might say, well, let's just bump it up to Warren, 1.45. But just bumping it up to those numbers would mean hiring 40 additional officers. That's a lot of money and a big budget decision just to get up to 1.45. And again, in the city of Dearborn, I know in their charter, they have certain numbers dictated by charter and how many officers they would have to have per thousand residents. And if we had to get up to 2.0, that would mean hiring 113 police officers. I don't even know how that would be possible. In Detroit, you'll see this, a large cities, urban cities, oftentimes will be in the three to five officers per thousand. That's just because of the sheer number of runs that these cities have, and you need officers to show up at these runs. Minimum manning levels is the second strategy to use when thinking about staffing, and we already use minimum manning levels, and that is basically keeping officers safe, which means at the start of a shift, we need X amount of officers to start that shift, period. Throughout the day, we do adjust those numbers depending if it's 3:00 AM versus 5:00 PM, and we know for call volume, how many cops we need on the street to make sure everyone's safe. Authorized budgeting levels, obviously we have to operate within the budget that I receive, but that is a big consideration just to be responsible with all those tax dollars. We have to take the budget in consideration as far as our staffing goes. And then the last one is the workload base model. This is probably the most scientific, and this is the one you probably should be using when you're talking about how many police officers do you need. This relies on actual levels of demand with proper supply of police resources, which is a fancy way of saying, how busy are you and do you have enough police officers to go to those runs? This approach relies heavily on demand through 911 calls, and we do a micro-level analysis of exactly what's going on in the city. So in order to do this, we would have to go through literally hand, go through thousands of daily log sheets reviewed line by line. We look at our winter time or summertime, call runs, call volumes, call severity, units needed per run are all examined, and the basic rule is if your officers are busy, more than 60% of their shift busy on a run, that means you're probably too busy and you probably need more police officers. And the reason is if your officer is going from run to run to run, you know what they're not doing? They're not checking their plazas, they're not pulling over that suspicious car in that subdivision because they know five minutes after clearing a run, they're going to get another run. So this is why you want to make sure these officers are not busy more than 60% of the time, and again, that's proactive versus reactive policing. So again, looking at how many officers you need is only half the equation. The other half is what do the citizens think? We've had two surveys in 2012 and in 2017. The 2012 survey was pretty clear. 74% of our residents said absolutely no more layoffs or cuts in police and fire. They were also very clear with 81% of our residents believe that our performance was good in police and fire. 90% of our residents agreed that current staffing levels are important. 93% of our residents believe that response time is important, and 92% of our residents all felt that feeling safe is very important. 2017, our current survey that we've had, and you can see here in this chart, the little lines of red at the very end are people that felt unsafe. So in that very top line, that's do you feel safe in your neighborhood during the day? And pretty much everybody felt safe in Sterling Heights in their neighborhood during the day, with only 2% of people feeling unsafe. So if you look all the way down, the second line is commercial settings during the day, in your neighborhood at night, city parks, and then in commercial areas. Pretty much everyone in Sterling Heights, everyone felt safe. The least safe was commercial areas at night, and that's probably a national statistic. But we know that people want us in the subdivisions, they know they want us in there, especially in those dark hours, patrolling and looking after them and their kids. And then was, the question was asked, what would you like police to concentrate on in the next two years? And the number one thing was visibility in neighborhoods, and the second was the city's efforts to prevent crimes. Both these things are being addressed right now. The visibility in neighborhoods, which means having officers driving around, we're at full staffing for the first time in a decade. We have all of our officers hired, so this is as good as it's been in a long time. So we have officers on the road, we're addressing that as we speak. And crime prevention efforts, like I said, the Smart Moves Program now, 19 elementary schools, 1,500 kids per year are all being talked to and taught different crime prevention techniques and crime-drug efforts to make sure these kids don't smoke, drink, and use drugs. All of these things are utilizing our resources that we have now to make sure that the public's needs are met. The next steps for the police department, again, the Safe Streets Milage ends this year in 2019, so we need to prepare and plan for the upcoming Safe Streets Milage in November. We're going to be hiring a consultant to look at the department from the top, from the top to the bottom, which we've never done before, and with a proper needs assessment, a recommendation for staffing and deployment will be delivered to city administration by the end of the year. Thank you very much.
There's little doubt that Sterling Heights has one of the best police departments, not only in the state but in the country, and it's due in large part to the funding that's received from Safe Streets. And we're also fortunate enough to have a highly-rated fire department, and now the Fire Chief Chris Martin will talk about how the Safe Streets funding has benefited the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of council. I would like to take a brief few moments to touch on some of the key areas and successes the fire department has experienced since Safe Streets was approved. Successful outcomes to various emergencies that fire departments are faced with do not occur by accident. Rather, they are the result of a geographically-placed set of apparatus and staffing that provides for response to emergencies to be both timely and to have enough personnel to make a difference when seconds count. The passage of Safe Streets allowed the fire department to stay prepared to handle emergencies effectively, and I'd like to share several examples. The saving of lives is a clear sign of a successful fire department and EMS system. We have had to date 16 Survival Coin recipients that include this 15-year-old young man and our most recent recipient from just a few weeks ago. Since the Survival Coin was implemented in September of 2016, it is safe to say that we would probably have close to 30 Survival Coin recipients if the program was started at the same time Safe Streets took effect. It is no secret that your chances of surviving a cardiac arrest are greater in Sterling Heights than in most other places in the country. This is why the University of Michigan is studying what we do in Sterling Heights to have such a great success, so that it can be shared with other successful tips in their program called Enhanced Pre-Hospital Outcomes for Cardiac Arrest, or EPOC. It is not just those surviving a cardiac arrest that benefit from our delivery of EMS in Sterling Heights. For example, this is one example of the difference we make with heart attacks or strokes. This patient benefited from an exceptional door-to-balloon time when they suffered a heart attack. Door-to-balloon time is something that is called because it's the timing of the speed from when a patient enters the emergency room to the time they're through the cath lab and have the blockage in their heart eliminated by either a stent or some other way. So that's the door-to-balloon time. This was the result of a great response time from highly-trained paramedics who quickly recognized the situation, began advanced life support treatment, notified the hospital, and provided for rapid transport. The result was a fast reversal of the clot, less heart damage, and a quicker recovery for the patient, and this was a clear response to the Safe Streets initiative. In the past few years, the Sterling, or past few years, the Sterling Heights Fire Department has faced several major fires, including two of the largest in the city's history. While we benefited greatly from help from our neighboring communities through our robust mutual aid pact, the work done in the first few moments of these events from the responding firefighters from the city of Sterling Heights had the most impact. In the case of the fire at Buff Whale, the first responding crews cut off the fire from spreading to the sales department, which allowed the business to open the next day as they began the rebuilding process. The recent fire on Christmas Day resulted in dozens of lives being saved in the first few moments with help from the police officers from both Sterling Heights and Troy. The fire at AG Simpson last year was quickly contained, which avoided a significant hazmat issue and the loss of the entire building, and that business was up and running in the next few days. On August 20th, 2018, crews responded to a fire at Seville Terrace and were confronted with a significant first-floor fire and a trapped occupant on the second floor. Crews were able to knock down the fire and rescue the trapped occupant with no injuries. On November 10th of 2018, crews responded to a fire at Lakeside Apartments and were confronted with a fully-involved apartment fire that was spreading to other units. They had a critically-burned victim lying on the ground and several residents trapped on the second floor. The responding crews were able to stop the fire from advancing, treat the burn victim, and with help again from the Sterling Heights Police Department, remove all the trapped victims from the second-floor rear apartments. These are just a few examples of how important staffing is when responding to emergencies. Staffing level is only possible due to the passage of Safe Streets. In 2016, the Sterling Heights, the city of Sterling Heights saw a significant reduction in its ISO rating that placed it among only two other departments in the state with that rating at that time. While there are many factors involved in that rating, the most important factor is our staffing level and our ability to respond to fires in an acceptable time and with an acceptable staffing level. And lastly, in 2017, the Sterling Heights Fire Department took over the medical transportation of the sick and injured in our city to area hospitals. This new program allowed for 15 new firefighters to be on the streets with no additional cost to taxpayers. After 14 months of this new program, I can tell you that it has been a huge success, and that success would not have been possible without Safe Streets, which allowed us to stay positioned to take on this new initiative. Mayor Taylor, these are just a few examples of how important Safe Streets Milage is to the service the Sterling Heights Fire Department provides, and that is all I have for you this evening.
So you can see how important the Safe Streets funding is to not only road improvements but to public safety. So we'll be hearing much more about the need to renew the Safe Streets Milage over the ensuing months. And Mayor, continuing on, Sterling Heights is in the enviable position to be one of the only large cities in the state, still growing in population. This is due to expanding residential developments and innovative economic development programs enticing businesses to grow, resulting in a robust job market. Innovative programs like recreating recreation also is helping to retain existing families and attract new families, not to mention individuals and seniors. City Clerk Melanie Riska will provide an update on the important effort planned for this year to prepare the community for the Census Count, which will take place in 2020. The count will validate the impressive growth experienced by the city over the past 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and members of the audience. Tonight, I'm going to share with you information on the upcoming 2020 Census. We'll talk about the history of the Census and the vital impact the Census plays on our economy and apportionment of representatives. So what is the Census? The Census is a decennial count of all people in the United States as mandated by Article 1, Section 2 of the United States Constitution, which states in part, "Representatives and direct taxes shall be apportioned among the several states which may be included within this union according to the representative numbers. The actual enumeration shall be made within every subsequent term of 10 years." The framers of the Constitution chose population to be the basis for sharing political power, not wealth or land. The very first census was conducted in 1790 and is conducted every 10 years in accordance with the Constitution. Since its inception, the number of representatives has grown from 65 to its current 435 members, which was capped with the Permanent Apportionment Act of 1929. With the number of representatives capped, the populations they represent continues to expand. After the 2010 Census, each representative represented an average of 700,000 people. It is expected that after the 2020 Census, that number will increase to more than 760,000 people on average. As of the 2010 Census, the city of Sterling Heights had a population of 129,699 people. The U.S. Census Bureau estimated that the city's population to be 132,631 as of 2017, a growth of more than 2%. At this growth rate and with our expanding residential developments in the city over the last decade and especially over the last three to four years, Sterling Heights is on track to becoming the third-largest city in the state by 2020. So why is the Census important? Other than for bragging rights, why is the Census important? An accurate census shapes the political landscape of our country, our state, and our county, which directly affects our community. I stated earlier that there are 435 members in the United States House. Those representatives are divvied up based on population. After the 2010 Census, Michigan was allotted 14 representatives, two of which represent the city of Sterling Heights. It is estimated that with the slow growth of the state of Michigan compared to other states, Michigan will lose one U.S. House of Representatives seat. So why is the Census important? Another intrinsic need for census accuracy is the allocation of funding. The Census Bureau reports that more than $675 billion are distributed to states and communities to fund essential federal and non-federal programs such as infrastructure, housing, transportation, education, and healthcare, to just name a few. Accurate data enables state and local officials to determine the need for current and future programs. The state of Michigan estimates that more than 34% of the state budget is from federal funding. The state distributed $465.9 million to local communities in fiscal year 1819. The more accurate Census count will have a direct reflection on the amount of funding the state of Michigan receives, and in turn, how much the city of Sterling Heights receives. Census undercounts can have a dramatic effect on the amount of federal funding states receive. The George Washington Institute of Public Policy projected that a 1% undercount equated to a loss of more than $94 million in grant programs administered by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services due to missed persons in the 2010 Census. Loss of monies from those programs alone equate to approximately- Loss of monies from those programs alone equate to approximately $954 per person not counted. This is just one example of what we stand to lose in a census undercount. We've covered what the Census is, a brief history, and why the Census is important. Now let's talk about how the Census works. Since the close of the 2010 Census, the Bureau began its research and testing phase in preparation for the 2020 Census. In early 2018, the city participated in the Local Update of Census Addresses operation, otherwise known as LUCO. Participation in this program ensures that all new residential developments in the city are identified as households, so the Bureau will ensure that there is a count for each of those addresses. In March of 2018, the Census Bureau delivered its questions to Congress for approval. Later in 2018, the Bureau opened six regional offices and forty area census offices. In 2019, partnerships will launch across the country, volunteer complete count committees will be established, and an additional 250 area census offices will open. In early 2020, a final marketing push will go out through strategic efforts and partnerships to make sure every resident completes the census questionnaire. Census Day is April 1st, 2020. New to this Census is the ability for people to respond to the Census online as well as the traditional mail-in method. The Bureau will compare the questionnaire submittals to the Census Address Database. Those addresses who do not have a submittal will require an in-person follow-up. Census staffers will be out in our community knocking on doors. The final apportionment counts must be submitted to the President by December 31st of 2020, and redistricting counts will be sent to the states by March 31st of 2021. So what does all of this mean for the city of Sterling Heights? In March 2018, the city of Sterling Heights committed to establishing a Complete Count Committee, which is a volunteer committee dedicated to increasing awareness and motivating residents to respond to the 2020 Census. Our Complete Count Committee will serve as a local census ambassador that will play an integral part to ensure a complete and accurate count of our community. We will partner with local community organizations, schools, religious institutions, businesses, and media to promote the 2020 Census. While it is mandatory for residents to respond to the Census, there are always concerns of privacy and acknowledgement of immigration statuses. Community education will be vital in assuring that our residents that the information collected will purely be used for informational and funding purposes only. To wrap up, 2019 will be a very busy year as we embark on a citywide effort to count all residents of the city of Sterling Heights regardless of gender, age, or status. Be on the lookout for more information in the coming months, and remember to complete your census questionnaires. Thank you.
Based on what you've heard this evening, the theme over the next year will be sustaining excellence and continuous improvement. Or to sum it up in two words, innovating living. And Mayor, that concludes our presentations. We're happy to respond to any questions from the City Council or to address any ideas or topics that perhaps weren't covered this evening. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Looking at our agenda, the next item is citizen comment on strategic planning presentations. Any comment? No? Okay. We'll then move on to the next item, which is mayor and council comments. Council, anyone with any comments or questions who'd like to go first?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Yanez.
Yeah, I'd like to direct this question. I'm not sure who to direct the question to, but if somebody could answer it. In regards to the physical health and care of the -- maybe Mr. Bahorsky can answer this. Through the chair.
Sorry, of course.
Thank you. So when, at the beginning of the presentation, you talked about the health and welfare of the employees, and we have this new clinic, which I frankly have been able to use. I got my flu shot there, so it was fantastic. But, you know, one of the big topics in government today at all levels is mental health care. And I'm wondering, what are we doing to help with the mental health care of our employees?
Mr. Bahorsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yanez, you know, it's a very important topic. I will say in working particularly with Chief Martin and to some extent Chief Wojcicki, we've taken great strides related to a lot of stress-related illnesses for our first responders. Probably in the last five years, I have seen more kind of PTSD, job-related stress arising in that industry. So we've responded to that. We've worked both collaboratively with the union. We provide through a long-term relationship. Anybody that needs a post-event counseling session, we provide that. If it goes beyond that, a continuing care, we provide that. We really have, you know, come to recognize how important the mental health aspects of jobs are. So there are referrals. Our health care coverage is very robust, so they can use their private treatment. But in a lot of ways, we are really stepping up to meet that need. So all they have to do is really reach out, and sometimes we found, particularly with police and fire, there is a code of silence sometimes. You know, you bring three firefighters into the room, "Are you okay? Are you okay? Are you okay?" Well, you're not going to be the guy that's going to raise your hand and say, "I can't handle that." So we've tried to break down that barrier also. So I hope that gives you a flavor of all the various types of things that we're trying, you know, we're trying to do and the resources we're providing.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up?
Yeah, absolutely.
So it sounds like it's post-event type sort of mental health treatment. Are we doing anything or are there any plans or any thoughts of doing anything that's preventative, just in the terms of education or outreach that we can do? Because it's not just first responders. It's, we're going to have guys driving plows for ten hours a day and under stress and, you know, and people just find stress in their regular lives, right? So it's not just the stress of a first responder going to an emergency, but it's the stress of everyday life. We now have an opiate crisis. Alcohol's been a problem for many, many years, and our mental health issues have, over the years, have, well, maybe they've come to the forefront. Maybe they're not getting any worse, it's just now they've come to the forefront. And I think it would be beneficial if we're really going to make an investment in our employees, not just their physical health but their mental health, and I certainly would hope that the city would look at programs that would be proactive and preventative in the mental health aspect as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yanez. Anyone else? Questions? Mrs. Koski.
Thank you. I can probably address this to Mr. Vanderpoel, so through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Great presentation tonight. They keep getting better and better every year. I like what you're doing with the investing in employees, the Sterling U, different programs that you're putting out, the Lean Principle. Question for you. We have taught a number of times of preparing the new generation coming in for management. Our directors are doing an excellent job. You have your second-in-command and you have your employees. Are we still going forward with the educational reimbursement where if they want to, let's say, go for their master's degree or whatever the case may be, where they're then reimbursed? And from what I recall is if they leave the employ prior to a certain time, then they, of course, have to pay that back. Are we preparing ourselves for the succession? We hire from within, we move people up. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Koski, it's a very good question. We have spent a lot of time, as council knows, in the area of succession planning for the organization, and thanks to the council's support, our plan has worked very well. I mean, we've been fortunate to hire people that are sitting side by side for six months to up to a year with the person they're going to replace. So, you know, it doesn't get much better than that than sitting next with the person who has thirty years of institutional knowledge to actually learn from that person. So I thank you and the rest of the City Council for allowing us to implement that succession plan, which has not been cheap. I mean, it has cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars to implement, but has paid huge dividends with a sort of seamless transition of major turnover throughout the organization. But as you indicated, we do have to focus on our younger generation even more, and we do have to prepare them for leadership positions in the organization. And so that's one reason why we're creating a plethora of training options under Sterling U, not just leadership training, but also specific training that they may need to do their jobs better, technical training, in addition to the very, I think, innovative idea of the one-day sabbatical too, that, you know, maybe in the future that morphs into something longer. But in specific response to your question, the tuition reimbursement program has also been a big part of our nurturing the development of employees, and many individuals have taken advantage of that to pursue higher education, whether it's a community college degree, a bachelor's degree, or we've even had some employees take advantage of graduate school and receive a graduate degree funded in large part through the tuition reimbursement program. So we certainly do plan to request full funding of that program in the upcoming budget, and you'll be seeing more about that as well.
One other comment I'd like to make on that subject is when you're going to do a renovation as far as a department is concerned, let's just say you want to redo City Hall, you want to redo the clerk's office, do you go to the employees that actually work in the department and ask for input, their suggestions as to how it could be reorganized as far as workspace is concerned, and any suggestions, the good old suggestion box? Are you still continuing that?
Councilwoman Koski, another good question. If you don't mind, I would like to call on our Assistant City Manager, Jeff Bahorsky, because he's been leading the effort with our facilities renovation plan, which has involved countless discussions with departmental employees and various groups. I'd like him to just briefly touch on the employee engagement process that has been underway with that effort.
Mr. Bahorsky.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mrs. Koski, it's been a very extensive outreach by city administration to employees. Every, I believe, every building that is being touched with maybe the exception of the court, and that's just due to the nature of what work is being done, but we have done what's been deemed a needs assessment analysis. So we've had a consultant come in, do focus groups with employees to get their feedback, because you're correct, the employees know best how the department operates, how it breathes, how it functions. So it doesn't make sense to spend money and not make sure that it's most productive and most efficient for the employees. So we've completed that. I believe on Thursday, we will be opening a RFP for a construction manager, and we hope to have the renovations underway later this year. So yes, quite a bit of outreach at each of the facilities.
And Councilwoman Koski, if I could just elaborate further on, you know, we're looking at the DPW renovation project as well, and I know that the director's been very engaging with the employees over there. For example, the mechanics who work on all the equipment, you know, they know best how a state-of-the-art mechanic area should be laid out, and that has been taken into consideration, and similar feedback from other disciplines in the DPW department as well.
I'm so glad you brought up the DPW and the new building that we're going to have there. I'd like to make a suggestion, and you can say no if you want, but please consider it first before you do. With the new building there, we need a gun range. We're at our maximum staffing levels according to the little program tonight at one hundred and fifty-one. So I think that our officers should have the opportunity to become one-shot officers rather than empty a whole round, as they say. And the only way that they can do that, to become an expert shot, is to practice. So if they had a gun range to practice in, that certainly would help. That would save on ammunition and make them, as they call them, one-shot officers. So have you considered the possibility of maybe putting a gun range with the DPW since its location is not going to disturb any of the residents out there? I think it would be very good. Comment?
Mr. Vanderpoel, please tell me that we're not wasting a lot of ammunition shooting because we can't bring people down with one shot.
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilwoman Koski, now I'm sorry, I brought up the DPW building. I wish I could retract that statement. But you have mentioned it to me before as well, that you thought a gun range would be a good idea there. I have discussed it with the police chief, and there are a number of logistical, physical, and practical challenges. However, that doesn't mean to say that, you know, we can't take a good look at it and see if there is an option there or perhaps elsewhere, and certainly report back to you and the City Council with some ideas for, you know, how we might be able to improve our gun range capabilities. We currently do share a gun range with the city of Troy, and we also have access to Macomb County's as well. So in terms of service sharing, that has worked well, but I certainly understand your interest and your concern.
Just a couple of other comments then, and thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. I'm not sure who to direct this to, but I would like to say thank you to whoever is going to make sure that my sidewalk gap on Clinton River Road in Sol is going to be done this year. I'm assuming that it's going to be completed this year, so thank you for that. Question in regard to our newly-named Donovan Park there on Clinton River Road, is there any thought to pursue the enlargement of that park to provide for parking so that the parents will not be running across Clinton River Road with their children to go to baseball practice? The other comment that I have is in regard to the fire department. I would like to see squad, I guess it's squad one, put into service. I think it's time that we take a very serious look and implement all five squads there. I think they have numbers now, and I would like to see that taken care of. Firefighter explorers, I would like to see if the chief would consider maybe pursuing that. I've always been a promoter of working with our youngsters to select our employees of the future. Same thing with the police department explorers. I think we're doing a great job there. I would like to see that instituted at the fire department also. And I'm looking forward to working on the Safe Street Milletage. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Koski. Anyone else? Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you. I would like to thank all the presenters tonight. Fantastic presentation as usual. Just a couple of things that I'd like to touch base on. The Smart Moves, if I could, Chief, just ask you a quick question. In the Smart Moves program, we hear so much now about human trafficking, and is that touched on at all? I mean, these kids are so connected, scary connected to people that they don't know. Is that addressed in that program?
We try to obviously age-appropriate content. These are fifth and sixth graders in the program, so very delicate when it talks about, you know, human trafficking, but we do absolutely, there's an entire lesson on the appropriate use of social media and the predators that are out there and the tools and the tricks that they will use to get kids to send pictures, inappropriate pictures, which then turns into blackmail and more pictures. And we explain scenarios in people that have been arrested for this and kids that have gotten in big trouble for this, as well as also the threats, everything that you see when people make school threats. But the social media part of this, yes, we absolutely talk about these traps that can But the social media part of this, yes, we absolutely talk about these traps that kids could be walking into, and that there's adults out there that wish to do harm, and the internet is usually the first step and the first stop that these kids get approached on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that in some way, shape, or form, I know fifth and sixth graders, there are some fifth graders that are more advanced than you and I, and there are some fifth graders that still play house at home with baby dolls. So, I know there's, it's a tough sell to, you know, on what is appropriate and what is not. I just think it's really, really important these kids understand that there are bad people out there. And I know, you know, we as parents instill that, but a lot of these households don't have parents that are that involved with their kids, so we are their defense. So, I appreciate that, and I'm so glad that that's moved back into the school systems. I know it's not dare, but it sure is giving them life lessons and something that they can take forward to and make them more successful and more aware of their future. So, I appreciate that. That's it for you, Chief. As far as the bike, hike and bike path trails that Mr. Castor, you have shown to us, do we have paper copies available, maybe in, you know, leaflet containers over at Dodge Park in the summer, or is there someplace that, you know, someone could pick up these paper actual path maps?
Mr. Castor.
Yeah, I believe it's the Parks and Rec Building or the senior center, they do have the entire trail system, the Clinton River Trail System.
Okay, so...
It's available there.
Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel, could we make those available more accessible to, maybe at the library and, you know, in the park somehow, you know?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, I think it's a great idea. I think we could do a better job getting those maps out, getting them updated to begin with. We've made a number of improvements, and we have a number of plans on the horizon, as you saw. So, I think we could come up with some creative weatherproof kiosks that we could deploy throughout the path system and do a better job of marketing that great asset in our community and not just make them available one department like Parks and Rec. So, it's a great idea, and we'll be sure to follow up on it.
Okay, I'm personally really excited about getting those kayaks in the water this summer, and I know my daughter is as well. And also, another thing that, while Mr. Castor is here, I am going to ask that we possibly look into the ordinance we have in the books as far as addressing unpermitted temporary structures, and they're unpermitted sheerly due to their size or their lack of size. So, it's, what, 50 square feet? If it's less than 50 square feet, they don't need a permit, but they can be ungodly, they can be unsafe, and I think we need to take a look at that, maybe not so much that they need to be permitted, but there has to be some sort of restrictions on them as far as aesthetics and safety, because they're starting to pop up, and especially with, you know, the possibility of people growing their marijuana plants. Now that they're able to do that, if they have it totally covered and it's not seen from the road, you can't tell what's in it, it's allowed. So, I think this is something we really need to address and, you know, do what you have to do. And lastly, I have to say that listening about the Safe Streets Millage and the renewal and how important this Safe Street Millage is, if the Safe Streets Millage does not pass, we do 5.3 roads over the next six years. If it passes, we do 32 miles worth of roads. That's huge. If the Safe Streets doesn't pass, we're talking about 50 full-time police positions and 20 full-time fire department positions, and we didn't even, Chief, the opportunity of if Safe Streets does not pass, what happens to our transport? It's scary to think. We have all this in place. So, I think it's really, really important that our residents understand that we're, you know, we need to renew this millage, and it's really important to maintain the safe city and the maintained city that we have and the services that we have, because none of us, you know, six years ago, I can remember, five years ago, we talked about this, you know, this isn't a joke, this isn't a bluff, this was the facts, and it was a scary, scary time. And I was really grateful to the residents for passing it, and I will be extremely grateful if they see to pass it again, because it's a really important part of our community. So, with that, I think I covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Mr. Mayor, I have a lot of little notes to myself, so please bear with me when I go through them. But one thing I did not see on the agenda today, but I think we should have a conversation about as a council, is updating our recycling program. I know that Councilman Yanez has made some comments online regarding it. I think it's, time has come to put recycling in every home if they want to use it, and for us to close down our drop-off recycling centers. I know our DPW has made a point to tell me that they are unsightly, they attract rodents and vermin, and it's just not the image of Sterling Heights that we should be projecting into the future, especially aesthetically. So, I think we should have a conversation about that, because I know that many residents stop me and ask, why do I have to pay for my recycling out of my pocket? Why do I have to contract with it separately? It should be a service that we provide, like many other communities of our size. That's my first point. The second point is, with community relations, I think I talked to you, Mr. Vanderpoel, about this, but I'd like to bring to the council, is the creation of a public-private mural partnership program. We have a lot of blank walls in our city, and we've talked about bringing public art to our community. I know that we've done a lot recently around the city center to spruce it up and add public art, but I think we should give business owners the opportunity to partner with the city, to lease their walls to us, maybe have some input on a potential mural, and then have an artist draw it, and hopefully the business owner would pay for a large set of the costs of the paint and maybe the artist's fee. I know that one of the first businesses off the top of my head that I think might be interested in this is Aventimiglia's Bakery, with their wall on the side. And that way, we could bring public art into the community and get more people involved, and it could be a wonderful program. I'd love to roll that out this year. I was very heartened to see that we talked about filling the sidewalk gaps, and I think we've done a tremendous job, especially on major streets with sidewalk gaps. The one comment I would have is that we also need to make sure that we're not just doing the major streets, but we're getting into the neighborhoods. There are several older homes in my neighborhood where I live that were there pre-sidewalk. So, you have sidewalk up to this home, and you'll have no sidewalk in front of this home, and you'll have sidewalk on the other side of this house, especially right across from an elementary school. I know it's never fun going back and kind of putting sidewalk in where sidewalk didn't exist, and there's some subdivisions that this is not going to work, because they're fully without sidewalk, but I believe that if we go into the neighborhoods and kind of identify these little spot gaps, it would make our neighborhoods much more walkable, especially for schoolchildren. To go off that, I know that I thought the innovating human assets was wonderful. I mean, we really are going out of our way to really help and strengthen our employees, and I commend Jeff Bahorski and Kate Baldwin for the work that they're doing. One thing I'd like to add is possibly developing a program to encourage city employees, especially public safety employees, to live in our city. And that's something difficult, it's going to be contractual, and it's going to be a program that's going to want to encourage them to move in. I know that if you already have a home established someplace else, you're not going to be as likely to move into the city, but we're hiring all these new employees. I think that if we give them an opportunity that will help them, maybe pay for their home or do something like that, maybe we could get more of them to live in our city, which will strengthen our public safety across the board, while letting them have the low taxes and great public services that we're well-known for. On top of that, I think with our non-motorized transportation plan, one thing that I think we should add to that is also a reforestation plan or a tree plant. And that's part of the zoning review that we're doing coming up here, but I think that that's really a goal that, you know, I've talked to a lot of residents, and with Emerald Ashbore and Dutch Elm disease, we've really lost some of our street trees that really gave Sterling Heights some of its character. One of the good things about the polar vortex, if there anything, is that they said that it should kill like 80% of the Emerald Ashbore larvae in the Midwest, so hopefully, it's the one good thing about it being so cold outside. I agree with Councilwoman Schmidt about the parks program, and I think we also should go even further and put more wayfinding in our parks, in regards to our trail, and even our canoe and kayak options. I think people should know where they are in the park system and where they should be going and what the paths are available. I think if we kind of market better, people would be more likely to use it. I also, without objection, would ask the city administration to bring a new fireworks ordinance before this council. I know that at the end of last year, they passed a new law saying that we could further limit fireworks in the city, especially the days and times of use. I know I, for one, don't like being woken up when I have to work the next day with fireworks displays into the early morning hours, and I think many of our residents don't want that either. I'd, without objection, like to bring that back up, amend the fireworks ordinance to the best of our ability.
Seeing no objection, Mr. Vanderpoel. Thank you.
I also wanted to add that this just, the non-motorized trail plan, which is wonderful, kind of reinforces why we should really go forward with the 50-and-a-half-mile nonlinear park plan in the drain. It would be a wonderful connection to all these parks we're putting in. It's shown that parks add value to our community, that people want to avail themselves of all the amenities we're putting in. You know, I was talking to the mayor last week, and I think we're really turning Sterling Heights into not another suburb in Macomb County, a destination place in Macomb for outdoor activities, parks, public art, things that not every suburb has and we should be very proud of, and I'd like to go forward with that. And finally, I agree that we need to pass Safe Streets again. I advocated before on this council how badly we needed more police and firefighters. I think the proof is in the pudding. We've added some, the people are happy, ALS is a success. We need to go forward with that. I think we need a length in the renewal date. It should not come back up for renewal every six years. It should come back up for renewal every 10 years at the minimum, because this is something that our city needs badly, something that we know without it will decimate our public safety and our streets. I can't see this having to go through this process of renewing it every six years anymore, because without it, our city will kind of fall back instead of move forward. Oh, and one final thing, if we're talking about our wish list, I believe that the jail should be brought back in-house. I don't think that we should contract it out, I don't think that's the purpose of government. I don't think it's the way our government was founded. I know I might be a minority on this council, but I think our police officers should man our jail as part of the social contract. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Zarco, anything?
Absolutely. My, thank you, Mayor Taylor. It goes without saying, I say this every year, this is my favorite meeting of the year, and part of that is because it's a presentation of possibilities. Not only do we look at what we've done, but where we want to go. Today, I can, I have to agree that we need to invest in the employees that we have, in their training, as well as probably their benefits, so that we can retain talent. I know that it was hurtful back in 2008, when we had to start eliminating some of the programs that we had for our employees, because we didn't have the money to pay for it, and dipping into their pockets and taking money out of their pockets, and they were getting paid less and working more because they couldn't hire people to help one another. So, I'm certainly glad that we are increasing not just the numbers, but turning many part-time positions into full-time positions. I think some of the benefits that we've added as far as the parenting, the parental bonding leave policy has proved to be beneficial, and going forward, we know that we're hiring a lot of new people, so it's the right time to do it. And so many other organizations have already done this, that we're pretty much following suit, that we're not inventing the wheel here, so I'm so grateful that we've decided to do it. I know that the other part of the elements, therefore, happy employees, because we've all been in a position, whether it be in retail, at a hospital, in a doctor's office, in a car dealership, you can always tell the people that love doing their job as opposed to those that are just doing a job. So, I think that's what our goal should be, is that everybody working here loves their job. So, it wasn't all that long ago, we had a banner that was hanging in the lobby that said one of the best 100 places in the country to work, and although we might not get to that anymore because of the number of people we have, but I think that was something that we should strive for, is that people feel that they work in the best city in the state. So, and we're working toward that. I have a question about the clinic, so through the chair to either Mrs. Baldwin or Mr. Bahorski. At one point, we talked about maybe another community partnering up with us on-site and maybe sharing the cost of the clinic, and I was wondering if any other communities have shown an interest in using our clinic?
Sure, that's a great question. So, we haven't had any formal discussion to date, however, actually, in fact, next week, I have the HR director from Shelby Township coming to check out the clinic. So, there's definitely some interest, as we've gotten momentum with our center, and it's something that we're currently navigating.
And I appreciate you doing that work, because eventually, we could probably have the clinic open more hours if we had more people involved, and then even cutting the costs. It certainly would be a great benefit to our employees. So, I thank you for, you know, talking to the HR director from Shelby Township. Safe Streets, we've brought up several times tonight, and it is important that we start working and also start communicating to our residents how important the passage of Safe Street, you know, is in this November election. It goes without saying that when you tell people that you are putting a renewal on the ballot, your, I guess your chances of it passing are definitely, go up, rather than say you want to put a new proposal on the ballot. But what I would like to do is, if we could have available on the website, I know people can go in now, residents can go in and find out how much their taxes are, but I still would like to see if we could somehow do a reverse projection as to take what people actually paid in 2007 or 2008 and compare it to the taxes that they're paying now and find out, so they can see that so many people, even with this renewal, will be paying less in taxes, that's even with the Park Village and Safe Streets, they're going to be paying less than they did in 2007 and 2008. So, if we could have something there, so people can compare themselves rather than look at old tax returns. Another thing is, I, there's two projects that I'd really like the city to work on, and one isn't just the maps for the park, but I've asked for an app for the park and for the trails, and now for the Clinton River, and even showing where the markers are at, and if, what, find a cost, at least get back to us, it's what it would cost to develop this app, so that if you're on the trails, you're not actually looking at a paper map, but you, I mean, how many times do you go on maps or, and they can tell you exactly where you're at on that road, and hopefully, you'd be able to do this with a park app, as they could find out exactly where you're at in the park. And we all have something that we hang on to, and we bring it back up, and just like Mrs. Kosky with her dogs, I'm coming back with beet juice for our roads, because we've been talking about how we're taking care, or fixing our roads. It's just as important as how we're taking care of them and what we can do to save on the wear and tear of those roads. I know about 10 years ago, I brought up beet juice because it was used in the northern communities north of us, you know, your Saginaw, Bay City, and Frankenmuth at the time, but there was just a news article that it's coming farther south, and Ferndale is now using it to take care of their roads, and it's actually a byproduct of making beet sugar. So, they found a use for, for this byproduct that's actually beneficial, and it seems to be able to, if you put it down ahead of time, the snow doesn't stick to it as fast as if it was prepared with something else. So, I really want to do a study on this and find out the actual cost, would be we saving money if we went into using beet juice as opposed to salt. And I think it's... as opposed to salt. And I think it's long overdue, and it's good for the environment. So that's another thing that we could, that, you know, we can look at. So I'm really hoping that we could take this seriously and find out how we can better take care of our roads so that they stay in good shape. And I want to thank everybody that had a part in the presentation, as well as all those that prepared the presentation that might not have been speaking with us tonight. And I think that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Mayor Protem Sirovsky.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. I don't have too many questions tonight. I just want to make some comments. I know that we're spending a good portion of time with this, so I don't want to belabor any other points. But I do want to thank everybody of all the departments, and the department heads. Wonderful presentation. You guys really brought us with a lot of very good information. As far as strengthening human assets go, that's an excellent way to put it, because if we do not have happy employees, as Mrs. Zarco said, we will not have a well-running and good customer service-based center of City Hall to work from. And it goes to all of our employees. It's top-down. We all know how if you have one employee at the top, it doesn't do well emotionally or mentally, or they're very angry, it trickles down. So we need to make sure that both our regular employees, as well as our department heads, are in a good place, and that is extremely important. As Mr. Yanez had said, yes, the mental health that we offer to our employees, any opportunities that we have for them for their mental health and well-being is important. I know that the Employee Assistance Program is what we use for that, and there is also, of course, we have to be cognizant that we can't have a large area where these residents, employees could go. But we do want to keep them safe in an environment where they feel comfortable sharing what they need. So also, I love the non-motor activities that we have increased from the 2030 visioning program. I use them, pretty much all of them. I love the park. We are doing a wonderful job with that. Only one thing, I'm, we're going to have to try to get maybe my husband on the bike, and we'll do the mountain biking, but we'll see how that goes. And the water is excellent. The water quality is good. Yes, we are fishing out of that river, and the water quality is pretty good. I can attest to it after being in the water last year. It's not polluted like you would have thought it was. If it is, it's very minor. It's a healthy river. There's fish. Make it, that does help show the health. Again, I do agree with Mrs. Zarco, we need that app. I use my phone for everything. I use my Apple Watch for everything. If I don't, if I have a piece of paper, I will probably drop it. I won't drop my phone. So that app would be an excellent amenity for all residents to see where we're going. So I would like to ask city council, or I'm sorry, city manager, to please see what we can do with that. We, it has been asked a few times, so see where we are with that. And then I'm going to piggyback on Mrs. Zarco again. Beet juice is excellent for the environment. We have got to stop anything we can pollut, as far as increasing pollution or hurting our environment and salt. See what it does to the sidewalk, your grass on the sidewalks. It totally decimates that grass. That's just a portion of how much damage it can do. So something else that we could use that would be effective would be wonderful. And yes, we need to increase our fire department ALS units by one. I think that we are definitely, if we're going to be even using another facility or another company instead of our own, it shows that there's a need. So I know that we have it, and if we've been able to exceed our expectations with this current, the current four units, I'd like to see us get up to that five. So that's where I am with that. And I think that's all for today. Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem Sirovsky. Thank you, council, for your comments, and thank you to the administration and members, directors, and everyone who was here presenting tonight and helped in preparing these presentations for our strategic planning. I want to touch on something that Councilman Yanez brought up, which is the mental health aspect, something I've been thinking about and kicking around for a while and had the opportunity to participate in at a conference I recently went to, hear from experts in this field to talk about not just what we need to be doing in terms of our employees, but really in terms of addressing this like a public health crisis. It's bubbling under the surface, much like the opioid epidemic was and is, and it's still taboo, and there is a stigma attached to it. We don't really talk about it, but we can look at any number of problems, from homelessness to crime, to being unproductive at work, to divorce, to problems at home, to problems at school, and almost all of them relate back to mental health in one way or in the other. So this is an issue that really touches everybody in our city, I think, and everybody that works for our organization. Statistics show that one in five adults will experience a mental illness in any year. So in 2019, of our 470 employees, 20 percent of them are going to have some sort of issue relating to mental illness. And that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's going to be as severe as some or not as severe as others, but it's something that needs to be addressed. And so what we need to start thinking about here in the city is what are we going to do to make services available to our, to our employees? As Councilman Yanez said, this is a major issue, and it doesn't just affect police officers and firefighters and DPW. It impacts literally every, every adult, but those high-stress jobs maybe are even more at risk. Things that we can think about are getting our workforce trained, getting peers trained to recognize mental health crises in their, in their coworkers, and getting the training that they need to step in and offer support and detect when, when somebody needs some extra help. We also need to look at it as a public health issue for our entire city because it impacts, when we talk about we want to have a better quality of life for our residents, that's what we're doing here. We're trying, as a city, to deliver services that make residents' lives better, to enhance the human experience in our city. And if 20 percent of our residents are suffering from mental illness, like I said, they're getting divorced, they're failing at school, they're committing suicide, they're not able to perform at work, they're committing crime, they're not able to pay their bills, their houses are being foreclosed on. This is an issue that we all know is a major issue that nobody seems to be doing anything collaboratively about. So it's time to really, I think, start addressing that. And there are things we can do. We need to engage our stakeholders. We need to, like I said, change the culture around mental illness and mental health, talk about it like it's not, you know, if somebody breaks their leg and they can't walk, nobody, there's no stigma attached to that. But your brain is an organ, it's a part of your body just like anything else. So when your brain isn't functioning properly, the rest of you can't function properly. We don't, we don't expect somebody with a broken leg to get out and run a marathon. We shouldn't expect somebody with mental illness to be able to contribute to society the way that anybody else can. So we need to get them the services like we're doing with the opioid epidemic. We need to help with our police department, get them trained to recognize people who have mental illness, and, and detect whether it's mental illness that they're dealing with or somebody who's just hostile. And when they, when they're given those, when they're given that training, arrests will go down, our jail population will go down, costs to our residents will go down, and the police can be freed up to do that 60 percent of proactive work like our chief was talking about. You know, so like, I'll give you another good example of things where we're just, there's a blind spot here. We've got sub-Arctic temperatures coming in, frigid temperatures below, below zeros, 6 degrees right now. It's going to be below zero tonight, it's going to be below zero all day tomorrow, and probably most of the day Thursday. We've mobilized, what, our senior center is going to be a warming center, and it's going to be a location for MCRES to provide services. We know the people who need those services are, in many parts, struggling with things like mental illness. Why don't we have, why, why don't we mobilize doctors from Henry Ford Macomb, from Beaumont? Why don't we get services there for people because we know they're the ones that are at risk? So things like this, we just need to identify where these at-risk populations are and find a way to get the services to them because it's going to have a big impact on improving the quality of life, not for those, just for those folks, but everybody. Because if one in five adults is suffering from some sort of mental illness, that's your mom, your dad, your brother, your sister, your best friend, your husband, your wife. It's not just somebody, it's not just some number out there. So a great point, Councilman Yanez, and I think we need to really start thinking about a comprehensive plan to address this, thinking outside the box. One of the things, you know, is like pets. We know that people probably love pets more than they love other people. So especially people who are suffering from depression or anxiety or something, their pet is their best friend. What are the things that we can do to make the city more pet-friendly? Can we work with businesses to make businesses more pet-friendly? You can bring your dog into some places at Partridge Creek. Why can't we have, why can't we have dogs coming in and out of City Hall? Maybe not every day, but, and maybe not necessarily City Hall, but can we open up our businesses and our city facilities to be more pet-friendly? These are ideas that we need to, as a council and as a city, start thinking about and addressing. Just, I'll, a couple other things, but I won't belabor it too long. The safe streets, I'd like to see a 10-year renewal, not a six-year renewal. This is something that is critical to our, our organization. The number of, I don't want to think about it in terms of what's going to happen if we don't pass safe streets. I'd like to focus on what's going to happen when we do pass safe streets. We're going to repave streets. We're going to have this great police department. We're going to have this great fire department that we have. We're going to continue to maintain this lowest ISO rating. Although I was recently with the mayor of Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids chief, and I have to say, she was, Mayor Bliss was gloating because apparently they got a one rating, which I noticed wasn't in your presentation. But Sterling Heights, Kalamazoo, and Grand Rapids, the three of us were together talking, and we're all very proud of the work that our, our fire departments do in making our city safe. And we're going to continue to do it. We're going to continue to save lives. We're going to continue to give out survivor coins. We're going to continue to beat back the opioid epidemic and narcotics in our city, and we're going to do that because Safe Streets is successful, and it's had a six-year success story to show. And just look at all those roads that we've, we've paved here. Our number one issue, I would say, over the last year and a half has been making sure that our roads are cleared and paved and safe, and that's what this Safe Streets initiative is going to do. One final thing I'll touch on is the census. I'm going to start talking a lot more about the Census 2020 that's coming up. We in Sterling Heights have a very high immigrant population, one of the highest immigrant populations of any city in the state of Michigan, and the immigrants feel very much at risk right now, and are, have privacy concerns and have status concerns. Even immigrants who are here legally but are non-citizens have grave concerns over providing information. So we, as a community, need to make sure that we're working with, there are a number of resources available. There are a number of organizations that will help to make sure that we have a complete and accurate count of every citizen that's living in the city of Sterling Heights. It's very important that we get that so that we're, our CDBG numbers are up, our, all the federal money that we get and the state gets is as high as, as absolutely possible. There are some things going on with a citizenship question, and it's all just, it's all very unfortunate because the census has one goal, and that's to get a complete count of every citizen, nothing else. There's nothing else.
Every person.
Every person. I shouldn't say citizen. A complete count of every person living here, not citizens, non-citizens as well. So that's the main goal of the census, and we, as a city, need to make sure that we do everything we can, working with the organizations like the Keldean Community Foundation, working with clergy groups, working with schools, teachers, administrators, the PTO groups, working with everybody and anybody that we can to make sure that every single person in this city is counted so that we get the fair amount that we're due. So let's keep that on our mind going forward. Thanks again to all the administrators here and directors for very in-depth, detailed presentations, but thank you for that. I think we are on a great path here in Sterling Heights. We're planning for the future here, and, you know, it goes to show that we have really hard-working, dedicated people who are, who could be doing any number of things, but what they're doing is they're dedicating their lives to increasing the quality of life for the residents that live in Sterling Heights. So I think that's, that's a great thing, and I appreciate your service to our community. So with that, we'll close that portion unless there's any final minor, nothing. All right. Close that. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Moving on, we'll go to communications from citizens, and I'll start at my right. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone in the middle portion? Is there anyone on the left? Okay, we'll close that portion, and we will go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool, anything?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Bohorski, anything? Or I'm sorry, Mr. Kuschubski.
Ouch.
He spoke a lot tonight. Give me a break.
I nothing tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Kuschubski. Counsel, anything? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for participating.